On a scale of one through five, like, agree to strongly disagree, you know, that kind of thing, like, uh, how much value do you place on there being, uh, farmland in town? The historic, yeah, yeah, so many different, um.
I have the open-ended questions right here, the actual, all of the questions are at the town hall for the previous survey.
Yeah.
But.
Are those questions gonna change from the new survey?
No, I mean, that was nineteen eighty's and this is twenty twenty.
Right, I mean, we could, I, it would, it would be a combination of reusing and then brainstorming ones, and honestly, it might be nice to whittle it down so it's not complicated. The simpler it is, the more people are gonna participate, that's for sure.
Probably wanna ask the moderator if it's legal to.
That's a great point. Yep. Yeah, if it's not, um, then we may just need to, um.
Ask the legislative body for money, it's not in the mail.
Exactly, no, precisely, um.
The last surveys were handled with Grafton. According to what I saw.
I mean, Grafton's population was little less than half of what it is now then, so it might be.
It'd be harder to.
A challenge.
What, what was the approval process for the last one? Was it as a warrant article?
No, no, so, the board, the planning board can approve it as a representative democracy, like, uh, you need to have a public hearing, but you, the, the master plan doesn't go to town meeting, it just goes to the planning board. So, it's, it's our goal to include the public and also exercise some discretion as being elected representatives, in, in terms of what's appropriate, some, some.
So, like, could we submit some of our own survey submissions for, for, you know, the release of the survey?
Can I suggest that we focus for public comment at the end, so we can get through what we're trying to do?
Sure, yeah, no, tha- tha- that's fine, let me, let me answer your question, and then we'll, we'll continue, um. I, I think that, uh, I, I, I think that the, the basic, um, th- the idea is that, i- i- if I'm gonna like say it in a very like harsh way, the planning board is obligated to hear what the public has to say, but not obligated to incorporate it into i- i- tha- tha- do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like, I, I don't think we want to do that necessarily, but like, it's.
Yeah, represent, right, you know?
Totally, um, I, I think the idea is that we, that, that the board is obligated to listen to what people have to say, and would be advised to use their judgment on whether what's being said is perceived to be like best or overall, like, kind of the majority opinion, um, but I think at the end of the day, it's the board's discretion w- what to vote for, um, in other words, uh, you know, it could be a hundred people at the public hearing and, you know, they could all say, "We don't want this," and the board could, in theory, listen to what they had to say and go completely opposite from what they had to say, and if they didn't like it, they would be advised to prevent, um, members to be elected to replace the planning board over the years, that's the, yeah. Yep. Okay, thank you.
But isn't this board kind of committed to just writing a plan that meets the basic requirements? Like, we're not gonna ask if you want a public pool, and if a hundred residents say they want a public pool, that's just not my goal. I mean, my goal is a narrow picture of what we need to do, so.
The master plan's also not enforceable, so we have to remember that too, if a hundred people want a public pool, doesn't mean it's gonna have, doesn't have to. It's not legally enforceable, so.
Right, um. I mean, I think that the very nature of this whole thing is that we have to be okay with the public not necessarily wanting what we think they want and being willing to present that to a certain extent anyhow, like, that's the purpose of the survey, like, um, like, I, I think the mission statement, a set of mission statements that we write as a board can be like a, a concoction of the values that we know we ought to include, but also, you know, I, I, the, I don't think we should, um, belittle the fact that we shall inform the general, general public and we shall solicit public comments, um. And, um, I think that a survey could be, that we sent could be way simpler than the one we see in nineteen eighty-seven.
So, if our, if our role is to have some kind of survey available early spring next year?
Yeah.
And, um, are we, we just talked about a lot of like work about the people sitting here, or will there be expenses? Do we have money in the budget for expenses?
Right, we have a small amount, um, we probably have enough money in the budget to send out one town, one town lib letter. If we felt like we needed to send more than that, we could consider upping the budget a little bit to cover that next year.
Are we considering doing that, I think the people who wrote the original one, hiring consultants to write the survey? Uh, hiring consultants to write the plan?
I, I, okay, I get the impression that if we hire anybody to do this, we're gonna have a hundred eighty-page master plan. I don't know how to fix that, I don't know if I'm wrong, but I get the impression that if we want a nine-page master plan, we kinda need to whittle it down, choose like a dozen survey questions, very basic, like, strongly disagree through to strongly dis- to strongly agree, like, I want Grafton to be rural, I want Grafton to have farmland, I want Grafton to have public transportation, I want, and, and like, whatever the results are, that's what's presented as the answer to that survey, and that's just like, you know, a dozen questions that we can decide, and then the rest would just be simply us coming up with a mission statement. Um, and it might be wise to get the results of that survey before we decide what our mission statement's gonna be, because we may need to incorporate the results into that.
Well, that's exactly what the mission statement would be, a combination of those results.
Right, um, I, honestly, I don't have a problem with the master plan being three pages, I don't.
As long as it's legal.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be long.
Vision, man use. So, it doesn't seem to require.
Yeah, um. So, so what's the first step? I think the first step.
You wanna come up with some, have somebody come up with some questions?
I think we could.
Bring them to the next meeting?
Yeah, let's, uh.
Or do we wanna look at the previous survey to see what's appropriate for use this time, come up with more questions?
We could actually, coming up with the questions could be just bringing the previous survey next.
Absolutely. I, I.
Not a political.
And, and using it as an effective brainstorm in front of us to like knock off some or augment a different one. So, like, yeah, let's look at the, let's look at the survey questions from your master plan.
Also finding out the legality from the moderator, and whether or not we put the survey to, to voters, and that will tell you whether or not you have to add money to your budget this year.
Right, um. Yep.
A complete statistical report of the survey, including responses to each question, is on file at the town office and at the library.
Did you get a copy of that and make some copies?
That was true in March nineteen eighty-six, but.
I'm sure it's in there.
Yeah, right. Okay, um, let's, let's leave it at that for the master plan for now, um, what I wanted to bring up, you had, Russell, you had talked about the capital improvements program.
I did.
And, uh, we, that's the next, our statement's, look, um, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, to be perfectly honest, um. We, because we have a planning board, because we have a master plan, we therefore happen to be able to have a capital improvements program.
Right.
Which we do, right, for like all sorts of other things. But it, um, uh, like, all, all, uh, fire department and the.
So, what is, how it works now is every individual department, uh, the department head has money saved, um, or they ask, say, the legislative body for a certain amount of money every year.
Yeah.
The problem with it, the reason why I think CIP is important is because, I'll give you a good example, I was the police chief. I was fairly well-liked, and I got whatever I wanted, that's not fair to, say, another department who just doesn't, they have a good department head, but they're just not a popular person. They still have a job to do, they still need a truck, or they still need this or that, so it just, it doesn't really work that well if there was a plan implemented, um, that in my opinion should circulate around the time that budgets go, so that feedback could come back to us, and we can write up a plan based on the knowledge from the department heads. Then, you don't, I mean, you don't have to follow the plan verbatim.
Yeah.
But the idea is to make things a little more fair, um, instead of, say, the road's getting to the point where you can't drive on it, but yet we've got two brand-new police cruisers, I mean, that's just not good for the people. So, a plan would say, hey, look, every six years, the police department gets a car. Every five years, the highway gets a new truck. Every twenty-three years, the town gets a new ambulance. Something like that needs to, there needs to be a plan that the department heads will follow, and they'll have some kind of respect for it. Now, there are some ti- you know, some pieces where, hey, the engine in the cruiser's bad, it really, it's cost way more than what it's worth to fix it, so you throw that in for the next year's budget instead of that other one that's working just fine, and we get another year out of it. There's, I guess what I'm trying to say is it's just not, it's not fair to the people that they have some departments excelling and other departments that are not.
I mean, more like a general fund that.
Well, what it is, is it, it's kind of a plan for the way the town spends their revolving funds and things like that.
Instead, instead of a, an annual vote on.
Well, there's, there's still an annual vote.
Yeah.
There's still an annual vote, and the department heads will still get money to do whatever, but you can, if you have that plan, the people can go by that plan and say, "The planning board says that this is best-case scenario." Because they've looked at all the departments and say that, you, you know, they feel that this is what works best for the people, instead of, hey, Russell's cool over there at the police department, let's throw him some money.
So, what I'm gathering is that when we look at the warrant each year, we see, shall you approve a certain amount for X capital reserve fund? A capital improvements program would be a way for the planning board to even those bumps out.
Correct.
And, and, uh, have a longer range of fund designation.
That is my take on it, do I think that Grafton has the capability of having like one fund? And that the, uh, like a CIP fund instead of, and then they divvy out the money to certain departments on, I mean, that really in my mind makes more sense, but I don't know the legality behind that, and I have to do more research.
Right, um. So, the capital improvements program basically has very little to do with how much money the planning board itself has.
Right.
That, that was like a conceptual hitch that I was struggling to overcome. Th- th- this is the planning board's oversight of other departments which need, which in, hypothetically, would want a regular stream of money to make sure that they didn't encounter.
Right, we prioritize, um, the, the spending of the big expenses, and we put it down, and we say, "Look, here's the priorities." And, I mean, there are, you can go out three, five years, seven years. That would be like the norm.
Yeah.
The, but for big expenses, for the town of Grafton, for example, um, our town office, that's a huge expense, and it's not a nice building, uh, you know, there, it probably ought to be in the plan, maybe on the, you know, even if it's the twenty-year mark, uh, people should know that, hey, there isn't possibly an expense in twenty years, maybe we should do some work to it now, or maybe we should plan on o- having a capital reserve to start saving some money for that. So, what we have going on now is we have, say, a person in town acknowledging that the building is not all that wonderful, so they put a warrant article on, whether it's by petition or by selectmen.
Yeah.
And then, if people don't quite understand it, there is no plan to look at, uh.
Right.
So, they, it gets voted down all the time. But, the popular police chief gets his cruiser, so.
Is there anyone here who isn't a select board member with Bigger Fish to Fry daily? Who wants to learn more about what it takes for us to start this?
I'd like to hear a little bit more about how it would be. You said the current system is unfair to the people, but.
Well, it is.
I, I think having people, voters have a direct say every March sounds pretty fair to me, so could you explain more about how, I mean?
I'll, I'll give you an example.
For administration, I, I kinda get it, but for the voters, the people, can you explain that?
As, as a selectman, I know that we have some departments that are struggling, and I know we have departments that are flourishing. But people don't necessarily know why that's happening, they just know that they keep giving the police department what they want because it seems to be functioning and doing a good job. There are other departments that don't seem to be doing a good job, but they're trying as hard as they can. The reason why they can't do a good job is because they don't have the stuff that needs to be replaced. Because, and because they're not doing a good job, they never get that stuff, because people won't vote for what they want.
I think.
See what I'm saying?
So, better services for the.
So, therefore, in the long run, it's a worse-off for the voter.
I feel like it's a pretty common political strategy to do everything you can to make sure somebody you don't like doesn't have the resources to do what they need to, and then point at them and say, "Look, that person wasn't able to do anything." Like, I, I, I think that you're right with the like public input and the transparency or, uh, but I think Russell's right too about, um, like, if you're not given what you need to succeed, you're just gonna be running place, and you're never gonna look like you're succeeding.
What's popular is not always right, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. I mean, it's, I'm all about a person being able to vote the way that they wanna vote, um, and that's great. But, when it comes to certain things, especially essential things for a town, it's the town's departments and this board and the selectmen to step in and try and fix those things.
Try to mediate.
Correct, yeah, right.
Thank you.
Well, it seems like if we can get a capital improvements program adequately implemented, I mean, maybe, yeah.
I mean, I don't think we need to jump right into it.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that we quite possibly could probably have, um, like a mock plan, so in other words, I would suggest during this budget, in, in a lot of other towns, it, it mimics the budgeting process. In other words, you ask for information during the budgeting process, because the department heads are at their desk, they know exactly what it costs for certain stuff for the next year, it's not that difficult for them to figure out three years later. Um, or even five years later, and while they're sitting there, they can figure that out with probably not much more time. And we don't know the information that they know, so we can't just come up with a plan, we have to ask them for their information. And I think asking, quite possibly asking for the information, um, during the budgeting process would be easier for the department heads to, to get back to us, and it, this would be the very first time, so, a mock plan, um, we come up with something with the information that we get, and then we take a look at it and share it with the public, see what they think, share it with the department heads, see what they think.
Nice to be able to demonstrate you're not trying to take anyone for a ride, like.
Yeah.
Without committing to it.
I, I have a plan in my own family, you know, I can tell you what my, me, my wife and I wanna do twenty years from now.
Right.
This town doesn't, and I just can't fathom that.
Well, maybe if the planning board's obligation to run this is, I mean, if the planning board has the, they're the party responsible for implementing this, I mean, maybe a demonstration of like good faith on the board could be for the planning board itself to have a capital improvement program to redo the master plan every ten years, you know, and, and so like, every year, there's a hundred extra dollars given to the planning board to go into their capital reserve, and every decade, you have a thousand dollars to send out some mailers and maybe hire some legal advice, or like.
Yeah, a hundred dollars every year is a whole lot easier to smolder than a thousand dollars every ten years.
And, and, I mean, the planning board's budget is miniscule.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so like if, if the planning board is in charge of this and has the authority to do it, but demonstrates that it's not splurging on itself, maybe that would be a little easier for people to deal with.
Could our master plan possibly have a line item about creating a capital improvement?
What do you mean a line item?
I don't know, like, you know, there's.
In the master plan?
Well, in the mission statement, it could be that part of the goal is to have a capital improvement plan.
It probably is, but we can make sure that it still is, and like the whittled-down version, we'll, we can make sure it still is. You know, there's a hundred things to read, it's like, you can't really take any of them that seriously, there's ten, it's like.
There is no reason not to put it in there, I mean, it's an expectation from future board members to, to know what's going on.
Right, okay, um.
Do these things need to happen in a, in a certain sequence, or like?
Well, we can, we can, because we have a master plan, you can implement a CIP. You can't, if you don't have a master plan, you can't have a CIP, so, we have a master plan, we're working on the master plan. We do not have a CIP, I think it's, I think it's more important to get feedback from the department heads and go forward with the CIP than I do to go forward with the master plan. However, doing it a little bit at a time like this, I mean, it's, right now, it's a perfect opportunity because it's budgeting season.
Yep.
And I think that that information, if you request that information from the department heads, who I have to say have already given a heads-up way back in March when I was running for selectmen, I said, "Look, look forward to this when it comes budget season, because this is what I'm gonna ask for." So, they've already got a heads-up, they kinda have the basic knowledge of what I'm looking for, um, it shouldn't be that difficult for them to give us that information.
Hey, uh, I'm, I'm reading this a little closer. So, here, I, I think I have the answer to what we can do right now. In a municipality where the planning board has adopted a master plan, the local, which we have, the local legislative body may authorize, may authorize the planning board to prepare and amend a recommended program of municipal capital improvement projects projected over the period of at least six years. That, I mean, that, to me, that very clearly reads that this needs to be on the warrant.
No, it's already on, it was on many years ago. Permission to do it was on years ago.
Does that stay put to the best of your knowledge?
It does until you take it away.
Okay, can, Maureen, can we, do you, do you have a sense of what year that occurred?
Not at the moment, but I can put my hands on it.
If you'd be willing to, that might be helpful, rather than pawning through years and years of.
Cause, cause, I, I, I'm hearing the same thing you are, so I think the next step really is to produce that.
Yeah.
Before we waste any more time.
Right, we need to make sure that that's solid, because if it's not, we need to put this on the warrant, or else we're wasting.
Well, it was already on the warrant, so whatever's on the warrant and, and people vote yes on.
No, I understand that, but.
Stays on until it goes away.
Just.
Just because we haven't done what we should have been doing all this time.
Okay, Maureen, um, I believe you, there are a lot of people who say things happened.
Oh, I understand.
And we need to have it shown to us before we take it a step further.
I'm sure there's gonna be a rain date between now and next month's Thursday, and I can sit and go from, my guess is it would, would be eighty-six until.
I, I would guess I would start at the eighties.
You think it's that old, right on? Okay, um, so, um, all right, so, we, yeah, we need to, we need to confirm that, um, and if it's, if it's not, we need to put it on the warrant, or if it's dubious, if people might not like it, we wanna put it on the warrant. And it seems like there's an alternative for at-town meeting to authorize the select board to appoint a capital improvement committee.
That the option is for you guys to do it, and if you're not willing to do it, or you can't do it, then the select board can appoint them.
Right, but the, uh, depending on how the warrant article was written, that permission may not have been granted yet.
Is that to appoint somebody?
The, the legislative body may authorize the planning board, or the legislative body may authorize the select board to appoint.
Right.
And so I don't, we need to find what was voted on is the, is still the answer, um, okay.
So, we have a next step for master plan, which is to get rid of the survey?
Yeah.
We have a next step for capital improvement, which is to find the warrant article authorization? And those things are happening concurrently, not one above the other?
I guess so. Um, yeah, I don't see why we can't work on that, um. All right.
And are we supposed to visit Hanson's property?
I think technically, because it's a major subdivision, a like site visit is, I don't know if allowed or expected is the right term.
Is it a posted meeting?
No, no, no.
I mean, I know I've been there, I've walked it three or four times now, because I was interested in the property.
Yeah, 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 um, I don't, I don't think it's like, uh, it, yeah, I, 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 I don't think it's necessarily like a decision-making process, um.
No, it just probably familiarizes yourself with.
Right.
You know, you could paint some picture of what's going on on that map.
Right. Um.
I mean, you see a wetland, you don't really know. When you go out there, you'll see there's thirty acres of swamp, you know, so
Yeah.
it, it'll paint a much better picture than what you saw in black and white.
Yeah, in many, in many ways, it's just a training opportunity.
Do you wanna schedule something now?
I won't, um, we certainly could. I don't know what Anson, I mean, Chris Anson can do. He can do it whenever. Um. Why don't I check in with him and, um, I can email everybody. I, I think that would be.
It's a group thing, not individually?
I don't know that yet. And, um, I think that the subdivision regs may specify that.
Do you know any different? What is it?
Two, two of you can go without posting it as a meeting.
So it's still would be a meeting with three?
If three of you go, then it's considered a meeting.
So that's still, that's relevant even if it's like an informational?
I'm sorry?
I mean, the three of us can go to lunch and, you know, it's like we don't have to have.
Well, if you go there, then it needs to be posted because it's considered a forum and it's considered a meeting.
I guess if, if it is planning board related, that's fair enough.
And it is in your rules of procedure, in your.
But then a public has to be notified?
Noted by me?
Yeah, and I can see just what to go.
Yeah.
But two of you can go. We always went and chose.
Right, it wouldn't need to be like a public hearing. It would just be a regular meeting.
Yeah, but then we'd all have to be able to go and do this property and all that stuff too if it's a public, if it's a public meeting, whether planning board.
Right, and I, that's, that's a fascinating rabbit hole.
Just give us something.
If it's a public meeting for the public intent.
Yeah. Well, so maybe it makes sense for, uh, two people to go. I don't know. You're familiar with the property.
I am, I don't need to go there.
You live a half an hour away. Sabrina and I live eight minutes away. I'm in the next door to one another.
Just Jake has.
Unless you want to.
You can go on your own also.
Right, yeah, you can.
But you said it's a forum. Two people can go without.
Two people can go without posting it as a meeting. So one can go, two can go. When it becomes three, then you're in trouble as far as it being considered a meeting.
All, all the things that we'll do at Anson's, you have to be subdivided property.
And Anson doesn't have to be there.
Right, oh, I mean, it'd be next year, so that'd show us.
Oh, yeah, I can imagine.
Okay.
You just give them a call and say you're gonna do it. It's not a big deal.
I think it's, it's part of the like major subdivision thing. A minor subdivision, which is like three or fewer lots and like certain road fundages and certain lotses, you don't, but you're, you're not obligated to allow a site.
Really?
I don't think so. Or a, a major subdivision, it's expected, I think. What do you know otherwise?
Do your homework.
Okay.
Do your homework.
I was on the assumption it was expected kind of all the time.
Yeah.
So wear rubber boots and only bring one on.
So.
And do it during duck season.
So, Maureen, I've never actually heard of anyone on the planning board going to anybody's property.
We always went when it was Gretchen and Peg and Frim and Barty and, yeah, we always went before you got on, always.
Yeah.
And we did, we, we examined the soil also. It, a, a lot of things got lost with that board that you were on.
Yeah, I think the soil sample maps are from like thirties or forties, that, you know, not that.
Right.
It moves a whole lot.
But it could have been moved.
Right, it really does. I mean, you do logging above it or something and that lot changes. There are.
Or someone just stays, you know.
Right. Yeah, so those, those really are the, some reasons for going there.
All right, um, I'm kind of satisfied with that. Um, we can be in touch about who wants to visit land and make sure that we don't push any limits. Uh, is there any public comment or questions? What's up, Jake?
Yes, regarding the whole roads thing, uh, did you ever look into the, um, connection between Bullock's Crossing and Cherry Hill?
I, I haven't. Um, do you know anything more?
Yes, and Baldur's Fork, I can relate.
Right, we, 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 we knew that that had occurred. Um.
Can you refresh me what's going on?
Yeah, so the, what might be considered like the west or north range of Cherry Hill, um, which is like the left fork, um, goes all the way to the sharp turn at Bullock's, which is called, which has a sign called Farnham Road, um, which had been passable in years past in like a jeep. And like you were saying, now there's, there's some rocks that somebody moved to block that. Right, so I, I, yeah, that, that, that's like relevant to this town map and, uh, you just have to do some digging on if that road was ever any.
Completely discontinued. I mean, you, you. Anybody can do the digging. You can be a private individual like those and ask for, say, the, the deeds to the surrounding lands to see if it was again, did right away or if it was given back to the property owners or, you know.
Sarah has a book, um, which she's able to produce that has a kind of old, but probably mostly accurate list of roads and their classification.
Isn't it the planning board's responsibility to make sure that towns that were, uh, were open to the public?
Yeah, um, but we're not gonna be able to work on an instant basis. So if, if you wanna speed things up, you're welcome to take a look. I'll keep it in my mind to try to figure out too.
Uh, regarding, okay, regarding the capital improvements, um, Russell was suggesting the budget already goes to the budget committee and the, uh, selectmen. So if it's unpassable people, it's up to those committees to. It's not, the, the warrant articles that come to vote are already passed to the budget and the selectmen.
Yeah, well, the, yes. However, it can change in the process. In other words, if a department head sends it to the select, the select, the selectmen can make changes to it. And then if it goes to the budget committee, they can make changes to it. Um, a lot of changes can be made in opposition of the department head, which doesn't directly reflect the information of the capital improvements plan, which is what the department has, has told the, the planning board is best. So you're right, it's, it, it, quite possibly, it's, it's a different form of information, but it's information that's coming from, directly from the department head.
Well, the, since it's not enforceable, aren't the, the budget, the budget and the selectmen would just do what they think is best anyway?
They do, they, they do, but if they, if they have a plan, uh, every, when everybody's on the same plan, it works so much better.
I think the idea is that just because, um, what we, there, there's, it could just be a, like a mutual agreement. It doesn't need to be a, a forced thing. The whole idea of planning is to get on the same page and try to work.
A good example is body armor. It needs to be replaced every five years because your sweat glands and all that stuff breaks it down. It's out of warranty after five years. And the selectmen know that you can't have gear that's out of warranty and put a person out there to go to work. The budget committee doesn't know that. The budget committee just says, wow, twelve hundred dollars in five years, no way. We'll give you eight. Well, that's not enough to keep that, that police officer working in a safe manner where the town's not gonna be liable for something that happens. The planning board has, they know the same thing that the selectmen know, but they don't have the overall say on this is what the number is gonna look like when it goes to the people to vote on. So it tells the people, hey, the, here's the reason why they need it best every five years. You see what I'm saying?
But the budget committee meets with the department heads and that's the time where it can, where.
Oh, good deal, but I, I've seen the department head, I've seen the budget committee meet with the department heads and they tell them what they need and they, they don't provide it.
I'm sorry, let's see how this stands.
So Jake, your, your questions and your responses are excellent exercise for us to think hard about what we're doing, but at a certain point, it seems like it's just like a little bit, uh, beating a dead horse. We've definitely heard what you said. And, um, I, you know, I, I think that your questions in general are evocative. But we, I mean, I think we have a certain viewpoint here that we're just gonna go with.
What's up? Um, I, uh, had heard that they're gonna get rid of the elected position as a police officer in town and switch it to an appointed. Uh, is that part of the master plan?
So the master plan is not a regulatory document.
Okay.
So there's nothing enforceable about anything written in the master plan. Um, as far as elected versus appointed police officer, that is something that can only be changed on town law and.
Okay.
And has, it, it, it's very much unrelated to the planning board.
Right, I, I'd like to see maybe that on the survey, uh, because that'd be really important. I think, uh, when Russell talks about how the chief is so popular, it's because we elected him. That's why he's so popular, right? You gotta, but when we start appointing officers, they may not be so popular, but they get to keep their job because they're, you guys are appointing them.
Well, no, they, you bring up good points and, and, you know, it's, uh, there's pros and cons to all those different things. We could definitely, I won't, I won't make any promises, but we could consider that as a survey component.
I like to have, as someone who's the public, uh, and I, hopefully a lot of other people, uh, you know, respect this idea is that we wanna choose who's in that position, um, because sometimes we can't always trust our, uh, elected officials in, in this position.
Yeah, it's, uh.
As in you guys are pointing, I've already had that decision.
No, I understood. It's, it's a centuries-old debate.
Certainly is.
But, you know, framers all thinking that, all getting all classes thinking that the common folk are not uh, well-informed enough to make decisions about things and it's kind of crooked seeming, isn't it? Like, uh, anyways, that.
No, I, I. No, extremely, actually, because you guys are actually part of the public too. You're just taking a position right now in this authority to be in that spot, but when you leave, you're the public.
Of course.
So, yeah, no, we're all equal.
That's, I don't, I don't think anyone was looking to suggest otherwise. Okay, what's up, Rich?
Did we ever get a next PCL report?
Um, that's a great, that's a great question. We can do that in just a sec. Is there any other public comment? Ryan?
I had two, I guess. This one's for Russell. Russell, you were saying how some of the unpopular department heads aren't getting what is needed long-term. This, you know, these are my words, vitally, and I think you're saying, um, I guess my comment is I think that should be the department's head, just, head's job is to go out and push and retail politic to the citizens, what they need for their department and stuff. I think that's a big part of their job. And as, you know, I've heard from what you did as a police officer, that was part of your job. So I think that is part of.
It, it is a big part of a job. Just some people are better at it than others.
Some percent of them.
I mean, and.
We should get this paid.
You know, should the people, um, have something less than what they're paying for it just because a department head doesn't have the time or can't take the time to go have a coffee with the people on the other side of town and explain everything?
Yeah. Uh, my, my, my comment, I think it's more planning board is the, the master plan. As Amelia pointed out, um, it's not enforceable. It's an advisory document, you know, these are my words. So to me, having this plan is pretty meaningless. It's all about the conversation you have with the townspeople, the taxpayers, the citizens, right? That's really what this master plan is about. It's having that conversation, having people get on the same page. Now, if that gets caught a fight and three pages or a hundred and eighty pages, cool, but it's more about having the conversation with people on the same page.
Well, yeah, that.
It's not about the document. And I have lived in, and I've been this comment before, we lived in a small city before and that master plan takes a life of its own and people start saying, well, we can't do this because the master plan doesn't say that. And it's just like, it can be a disaster. So it's simple and get the conversation going.
Is there a financial, uh, benefit to the town, say grants or anything like that by having a master plan? So there's something more to it than just, hey, Raffin wants to go in this direction, let's talk about this. It can be beneficial to the town financially.
Is grants for that? Is grants for the master plan?
So will some, it's my knowledge that some grants are only available if you have a master plan.
Interesting.
Which we have.
So, whi- which we do, right? Although if we applied for a grant.
With a certain.
It might be questionable that our master plan hasn't been updated in almost forty years.
That's exactly what we, exactly what the issue is.
Right.
The board said it's still good, but it'd have to change.
We had question buddies then.
Oh, you want bridge money for that bridge that, that didn't work out? Um, can we see your master plan? Oh, why is it forty years on a day? You don't qualify for the money. It's, there are reasons to, to follow the RSA's and keep it up to date.
Have, have we heard that though, or is that just something that could?
No, I really have heard. I think there is a financial benefit to having, there, there are grants.
Is there like a, a date then? Because we were hearing five to ten years time to time. Like, is there something that to qualify for those grants?
Well, I don't, I don't know. Um, I, I think that, um, there's a lot of potential philosophical idealism coming from anyone in this room. And I understand the aversion to like treating the master plan like a special thing because I often felt that way myself in the past. Um, at this point, I feel like it's clear to me that to all stay on the same page and, um, to make sure the public services are appropriate, that it takes a staggering amount of deliberation and what seems to be wasted time to reach a decent agreement. And I think that's what the master plan is basically trying to accomplish. Is that it's, uh, it's facilitating discussion, kind of like you said, that's the valuable component of it. Um, but sometimes it seems, I don't know, I see an office full of a hundred people and it doesn't seem like anybody's actually doing anything, but I guess they all need to be doing what they're doing to make the company work.
I didn't say consensus, I said.
Fair enough, yeah, yeah, right on. Um, well, Ryan, we, we appreciate your feedback.
Thanks.
And, um, we're happy to hear, uh, public comments and stuff and, you know, uh, more perspectives is better, I guess. Russell, ex officio comment, or was there any other public comment? Lee, you got anything?
Right on.
Uh, Paul, what's up?
Um, considering how important some of this stuff is, uh, I was wondering if maybe agendas for the planning board could be a thing so that you might worry more public.
Sure, typically, um.
Uh, you guys have an idea what you're coming here for this evening, right? I mean, you knew Anson was coming and all that.
Right.
The public, I mean, it may not be a shell, but if it's a May, it'd be a great May.
So are we posting it online? Like, how are we getting people to see it prior to?
It goes to the website.
It could, it could go to the town website. That's a reasonable consideration. Um, this is a, I don't know how to attack this one because, um, I feel like if there are forty people in, in the room, they may very well be very informed. It may not be practical to include everyone in the discussion at that point. Um, we, we could potentially have a three-hour meeting. I think if you were to go to a town that, for better or for worse, had their act together, like lime or something, you make a peep, you're out of there. Like, public comment, like limited suits and ties, like intensity, like, uh, I, 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 I don't ever want to be like that.
Theoretically, it'd be great if like everyone in town just showed up tonight.
I don't think so. And, and the, the, the reason is, is because the whole idea behind representative democracy is everyone's got a life. And if every single person votes on every single thing and every single component, all of our lives are a hundred percent. and if every single person votes on every single thing and every single component, all of our lives are a hundred percent local government. And I don't think most of us want that.
No one needs to show up, they just need to sit at their desk.
At a crucial point, how irrelevant it all is.
I'd like to know.
No, no, I I, Paul, you bring up a good point, I don't know if we're obligated to do that, um, I I can try to see if it makes sense. It's also hard to know what we're gonna learn last minute about what we should include.
Do the other departments do that?
Yeah, that's a great question, does anyone else post a agenda?
Selectmen.
Okay, all right.
You know, sometimes it's pretty important, I remember, I remember when you had a bunch of alternatives, uh, show up. I think some are on the board now.
Yeah.
And I had no idea of that, I'm unaware that anyone in the actual public did and that that was one of the best-attended meetings ever. How did everyone know? That's very selective.
Well, yeah, the the board, the board chooses alternates, the public does not.
No, no, how did the people know to be here for that meeting? I mean, that's all private conversations, private phone calls, the public was not noticed.
Yeah, and it wasn't a meeting.